Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and begin. Welcome, everybody, tonight. It's nice to see such a big crowd. And I hope there are a lot of people watching this live through the YouTube channel. I've got a couple of just personal notes here and announcements to make, and then we'll get right into it. So, thanks to Go Polk City for hosting this event tonight. It's really important. Thanks to those who worked on the questions. We have about seventeen questions to get through, and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Thanks to North Polk School District for offering to provide the cameras and the microphones and the setup for the YouTube channel. We appreciate that very much. Our plan tonight is to bring you a positive event, one that provides candidates opportunities to make the public more aware of their individual positions on various topics. We decided not to open the floor to questions because we have a lot of questions already, but rather asked citizens if they'd like to send us questions to consider, which a couple did. And we tried to roll those questions into our question set. Because of the number of candidates, in order to get through as many topics as possible, we've decided to limit response time to two minutes per question, per person, except for the first question, which we believe needs a little more time. So, we're going to let the candidates talk for four minutes, and it'll be perfectly clear why we're giving more time for that question. At the end of the forum, we're going to ask the candidates to hang out and greet the audience in case anyone from the audience has any last-minute questions of their own. Brandon already mentioned the bathrooms are this way, in case anybody wants to utilize those. And then finally, because we have a lot of questions and this is a two-hour event, we're just gonna kind of read the room after an hour and see how everybody looks like they are getting along with the questions. And we don't want anybody to leave, so if... We're just gonna kind of play it by ear and see how it goes. The candidates are prepared to go past an hour, and I know that's not an issue. It's just what the public thinks they want to do. So, with all that said, I think we will go ahead and start with question number one. And this is the four-minute question, and you all know that Brian is doing the timing. So, question number one: Please take a few minutes to explain why you are running for city council and what makes you a good candidate. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your connection to the city. And just a note, we'll start here with Councilman Dvorak, who's going to introduce himself, and go down the line. But the next question, we won't always be starting with Dave. We'll go to the other end and come back the other way, go to the middle, so forth and so on. Okay, so you want me to read that again now that I interrupted, or are you good to go?
No, I think we're...
All right.
Thank you, Steve. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out, for everybody watching tonight. This was an exciting time for Polk City. We have a lot going on, and it's just good to see that we have other people that are interested in running. This isn't part of the question, but it's just really... It really does feel good to have other people interested in city government. But for me, I've been around in Polk City for twenty-five years. I grew up on a farm in east-central Iowa. I take a lot of the work ethic and a lot of my ethics and morals from that, including my faith. My wife and I were married twenty-five years. We raised two children here through the North Polk Schools, which we love and support wholeheartedly. Shameless plug, Keith. And I've been on the council for sixteen years. The... What's most important to me as far as the council goes is... A lot has happened in sixteen years. Our population's increased by sixty-two percent in six year... I'm sorry, in eighteen years since I've been on. So, when you look at that, when I got onto council initially, and the reason why I want to continue is that we are... We don't want to have an identity crisis. We have a very specific and amazing identity here in Polk City. Everybody wants in, nobody leaves. When they leave, they go from one house to another in town. So, that... My entire... The sixteen years has allowed me to have that identity and to be able to bring that forward for another four, eight, you know, however many years I can... I'm honored to be on the council. We came here because certainly we didn't want to be in Ankeny. We don't want to be in Grimes. Love the cities, that's not Polk City. We can go there if we want to go there. We need to keep our specific identity here in Polk City. As I said, my faith guides me. That's my moral and ethical compass. I put myself in your shoes when making decisions. I don't just say, "Well, tough." I really do want to understand what other people are thinking, their perspective, and I want to do the right thing. It's very easy to do the right thing. Doesn't happen a lot in politics right now. My decision-making process deeply rooted in objectivity from the insights I've gathered over the last sixteen years from the taxpayers. I want to continue to safeguard our taxes, which I'm sure we'll get into in some discussions later, sort of how that has not increased along with our population, how we've been able to grow smart, if you will, and be able to continue to bring businesses in, but also the smart growth with the residential as well. I think, as I wrap this up, we need to carry over the identity that we've had in the past. And with the experience that I've had in working with several different people, Ron, Mandy included, and Rob and others, I want to continue that moving forward while being incredibly sensitive to increase in taxes, levies, and fees. So, that's me in a nutshell.
Well, hello. My name is Jesse Gutierrez. I'm originally from Oklahoma. I was a Desert Storm veteran, graduated from the University of Tulsa, degree in economics, and I have my MBA. I've been in federal employment probably from the time that I got out of the service. I went right back into federal employment after I was... After I graduated with my MBA as a background investigator for the federal government. That brought me to Iowa. They said I could either move to Minot, North Dakota, or Iowa, and I couldn't say Iowa fast enough. It's been nothing but a warm and welcoming place, and it got me out of those Oklahoma summers. I moved to Polk City because I wanted to be in Polk City. I'd lived north in Story City for a while, and there was a magic about coming to this place. I really didn't do anything but go stick my feet in Big Creek's beach back there, but it was just a nice, welcoming, and warm place, and the people here were very welcoming and warm also. We moved here eleven years ago, and as Dave says, when I decided to actually move again, we moved to this city. Didn't even think about leaving. I love the way that this city has welcomed me and my family, and I want to still be able to have that small-town feeling, even though the growth in this place is exponential. One of my opportunities that I have, if I were to become one of the counselors, is to be able to help the private industry grow. I'd like us to be able to incentivize and not choose winners and losers in that private industry. There's several areas in which we could do that growth, and I want to be able to help using economic principles to actually help that growth and be able to see if we can have it be the kind of city that we'd like to see long-term. Right now, the base of residents are taking the tax burdens on wholeheartedly, and I think that we could share that with our consumer base, and that way we wouldn't have to raise our property taxes consistently. If there's any questions that you have, I would be glad to answer it, and thank you for the opportunity of being here.
Hi, I'm Nick Otis. I'm a USDA research scientist. I moved back to Iowa in 2011. I originally grew up in Clear Lake, Iowa, a town of about seventy-five hundred on the north end of the state, a town that's a lot like Polk City. When I moved back from going to school out east, I spent a couple of years out there getting my master's, realized that the big-city life wasn't for me. Came back, lived in Beavertale for about a year with my wife. She was working for the Des Moines Public Schools at the time. And when she took a job in Ankeny, we started looking north for a place to live. I didn't expect to be able to live in Polk City. We happened to luck into an affordable house up here. She's a teacher. I'm a government scientist, and this is not really a cheap town to live in. So, we are incredibly grateful for the opportunity to be here in the first place. We followed my parents into town in 2015. They had been here since 2011, I believe. And having them in town has been another absolute blessing for us. I know they really appreciate being able to watch their grandkids grow up close. I've been on the Parks Commission for the last three years, and prior to that, I was part of a project that I believe Rob got a start on, the Neighborhood Citizens Group, which was an outreach group looking to help have neighborhood ambassadors, if you will, that could spread the word about what the council was doing and why. And I got involved in that in 2016. So, I've been doing stuff with the city, not quite since I got here, but pretty close. And I'd really like the opportunity to step up and do more for this town. I've got two boys. We moved here right before the birth of our second. And other than that, I am involved in the soccer club, as a parent, as a coach, and as a referee. And in addition to that, I've done work on a couple other city projects, the Community Visioning Project and the Iowa Great Places Advisory Committee. With that, I think that's pretty close to what I have to say about myself. The things that I would like to do for this town. I'm on the Parks Commission. Parks and trails are my big thing. The city has an excellent plan going forward, connecting the Neil Smith Trail over here to the High Tressel Trail up on the north end of town. It's something that I think we should have had done quite a while ago, but government moves at the pace government moves. Having that connector is going to be able to bring more recreation dollars into this town instead of bypassing us, and I want to see that. The other big thing that I'm passionate about is the Regional Park Project. We have a good plot of land up by the upper elementary school that is set aside to be a park for all citizens right now. It's gonna be more sports fields. Okay, I'm getting a wrap-it-up signal. We're sitting on it right now. I want to get us started on it so we can get some fields seeded out there, and then we can wait for the grass to grow while we're figuring out how do we pay for everything else. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Rob Sarchett. So, between my wife and I, Laura, we have three daughters, Hannah, Molly, and Maggie. I've lived in town for twenty years now. I moved here when I was single, and it seems like a lifetime ago with when you get married and have kids. And I love the stage of life that we're in, but the free time when I moved here seems like a different concept to where I'm at now. But I stumbled upon Polk City. I would love to claim that I did my research, and I came here for good reasons because of an analysis that I did, and that's not true at all. I found a house that I liked and started to develop roots. I also was raised on a farm in northwest Iowa, went to school at the University of Iowa, got degrees in economics and political science, and then moved to the central Iowa area, lived in the area for a while, and then, like I said, found a house here. Came to town, recognized pretty quickly, despite my lack of research, that it was a good place to live and wanted to get involved. And so, in 2011, I joined the fire department as someone who had fainted when they were a kid. When I cut my hand, I had a lot of medical learning to do and was able to overcome that and get involved, get a EMT certification, firefighter. And that really entrenched me in a way that, quite honestly, I wouldn't have ever expected before that. The experiences that I had there with partners, some of whom are still in the department, well in advance of my time in the crowd. And I think that was a... I know that that was a real formative experience for me. I was on for eleven years, was a lieutenant, was a captain, treasurer of the Firefighters Association. And like I said, that really got me involved in a number of aspects. One of the first ways was through the festival, when the Four Seasons Festival has actually started, and have been involved in the planning committee, picking up trash, setting up fences, doing all kinds of things, and have loved most every minute of it. It's been another good experience. Some of the other things that I was involved in was community visioning later on and as well, the Polk City Arbor League has been a great experience too. I did have the opportunity to join the Planning and Zoning Commission. I want to get my dates right. I think in 2014, I joined there for two years. Excuse me, 2012, and then had learned a lot from that group, learned how to study a development, learned how to ask good questions. And really, with planning in the title, you've got to be mindful of the future and learned a lot there, met some great people, some of which are also still on the department or on the commission. And then there was actually a departure on the city council, and so I was appointed to the city council what would have been nine years ago and then have been elected two subsequent times. So, the things that are important to me that I have tried to make a focus, a lot of the other people have talked about. One thing that I've always tried to do is I have certain preferences. At the stage of life that I'm at, I want to make sure that while I'm representing and hearing the people that are at the same stage that I am, that I'm also looking out for people who aren't in my situation and have built those relationships to try and maintain a well-rounded town and focus on the areas that people want to represent. I see real two buckets of things that we vote on. Are there the right things to do long-term, and then trying to get feedback, and I'm getting the wrap-up too, so that's where I like to focus on.
Well, good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you for those that are here in the audience. Thank you to those that are watching online. This is a great turnout, better turnout than I anticipated. It makes me feel good to see that there's actual people that care and want to be engaged to see what's going on with your city government. A little bit about myself. My name's Jeff Savage. I was born and raised on the east side of Des Moines. Hold your applause, please. Lived there most of my life. I've been coming out to the Polk City area for a long time. Unfortunately, I lost my parents at a young age. I had, though, thankfully, I had an uncle who was an avid fisherman, and from them, I don't know how many times, we went out to Big Creek or went up to the Polk City bait and tackle and spent a lot of time. So, to me, Polk City's always had a little sentimental piece in my heart. I moved to the city about nine years ago, and I just have been deep in love with the sense of community that I've witnessed with everybody. From working with people at the city to getting involved in some of the organizations, it's really kind of spurred, renewed interest in humanity and wanting to be able to work with people. Again, I'm a firm believer of you get out of what you put into things. And for me, public service kind of felt like the next logical step. I started in 2021 by going to the first inaugural Citizens Academy, which is very beneficial, and if they have it again next year, I'd recommend to anybody else to attend that. I did get subsequently in 2022, I joined the Parks Commission and served on the Parks Commission. I recently joined the Board of the Friends of the Parks. I did, as well as some of the other individuals up here, I participated in the downtown assessment and the Community Visioning Program earlier this year. Again, I'm just pretty passionate about the city. This is something that's really important to me, and I kind of put it off until this year to actually run for city council because for a lot of people, unfortunately for myself, my career came first, and I just didn't feel like I had the time to dedicate to running for public service because it's something that I want to make sure that I have the time to be able to dedicate and actually give my hundred percent. Thankfully, this year, things have changed where I have a little bit more flexibility. And earlier this year, you know, I've been going to all the city council meetings. I've been reading all the city council packets. I've met with all the department heads one-on-one to get kind of a health check of where our city is and some of the challenges moving forward. I've also had a huge reach-out talking to a lot of residents in our community to get different perspectives. To me, what's important is realize we're a community. Community is made up of a lot of different people, different socioeconomic statuses, different colors, different religions, different sexual orientations. We represent the entire community, not just certain demographics or certain people. It's important that we remember the people, the core people that are part of Old Polk City that have been here a long time, as well as the new people that are coming in all the new residential communities. So, again, what I'm hoping to do is if I get elected, is represent and be a representative for everybody within the community. That's it.
Okay, thanks. We'll move on to question two, and the rest of these are two-minute time limit, so plan accordingly. Healthy cities usually have a fifty-fifty or sixty-forty split between commercial and residential property. This helps lessen the property tax burden on residents. Polk City's split is ninety-ten, business to... or residential to business. What would you do to create a healthier split? And we'll begin at the other end, Jeff.
Yeah, so that... I'm glad that you brought that up, Steve, because I think there's a lot of people in our community, especially people I've talked to, that are not aware of that, that we are overly dependent on residential tax dollars, hence why we have the tax rates that we do, and we're overly dependent on it. I think one of the things that's kind of important to me is we need to figure out how we can actively court new businesses rather than rely on organic business growth in our community. I know we have a chamber, and their responsibility is economic development. The Chamber also does great jobs with a lot of the events that we have. But one of the things I would like to see is if we could focus and shift and pivot, maybe put a little bit more emphasis on the Chamber to have that outreach of economic development and figure out how we can partner with businesses and court them to bring them into town. Again, it's very important that we bring more businesses, not only for services that people want in town so they don't have to drive out of town, but again, that's larger organizations that a lot of our schools are nonprofits. Whoever it may be can go to and ask for funds and donations for activities, whether it be Little League or the Kiwanis or what have you. So, again, I think what I would like to do is, you know, have a better dialogue with the Chamber to ensure that they're doing their due diligence in more economic growth and development.
Thank you.
Am I next?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just go this way.
You got it. So, having spent a lot of time on this, I do recognize that this is also an investment that we need to make going ahead. The split that you noted is for a reason, and I think we first need to recognize why. We're not close to major highways or interstate. Much of the development that we've had to this... All of the things that make a good residential development, tree-lined roads, topography, make it tougher for commercial. So, what we've tried to do over the last couple of years particularly is establish corridors for that economic development, for commercial property, and do so in a way that can be good neighbors. I established... I didn't establish. I'm a part of a group of the metro city council folks that meet on this topic amongst a few other things, and have really tried to pick the brains of the other communities. For example, Norwalk, that's not that much bigger than us, developed an egg processing facility a couple of years ago. And so, I was pretty surprised by that because I don't think that I would particularly want an egg processing facility in my backyard and don't want to have another citizen have to have that choice as well. And so, in talking with them to try and figure out what they did to get that approved, it's a little bit farther away. And identifying those areas, as we've annexed property, specifically pushed back on developments. There's one across the spillway in particular that we went through, I think, four different iterations because they can sell residential houses like nobody's business right now, but the economic development is farther down the road. So, I do think we've planted seeds with that group or with our planning in particular to be able to make those investments. There are more near-term ones that we can do, and like Jeff had mentioned, with incentivizing them in the margins. I'm not talking about abatements or giving away the farm for an addition, but I definitely think there are things that we can work on and partner with Go Polk City to do a little bit better job of.
Thanks. Nick?
So, I will agree with a lot of what both Rob and Jeff have said. We suffer from a dearth of available properties for commercial businesses, whether they're industrial or retail or really anything. Our downtown was built such that they're all one-level buildings, and as we move forward, we've got the opportunity to infill a couple of spots with some multi-story buildings that will give us the opportunity to have both retail space and some second-floor housing because we also lack affordable rental housing. Going forward, I would like to see us develop better relationships with commercial developers. We all know that we are hemmed in on either side by Ankeny and the reservoir, and we can really only grow north. With that, we do have the opportunity to take advantage of a couple corridors on our outskirts of town. Was that 126th Street? The next one up above North Side Drive runs straight over to the interstate. It's got a couple stop signs in the way, but it has the potential to be a fantastic corridor for us to put in some commercial, some industrial space. I want to see anything that we do going forward have significantly zoned spaces for that. Thank you.
We have an opportunity here to streamline our city government. If you think our city government is easy to work with on the commercial side, you're probably not under the right conception. It takes three, on the average, of three drawings to get back your plans to give somebody opportunity to make some kind of commercial investment or private investment. You can do that down to making the ordinance... You can do that down to making the ordinance be as clear and cut and dry as it possibly can be and make that a lot more efficient. Every single time you go back to the drawing board, that costs you money. People are not willing to come in here and build if it's if it's hostile to your building environment. You got to eliminate those obstacles. I'm not saying totally eliminate the obstacles, but have it say directly in the ordinance what it's going to need to build there. Submit the plans and see if we can get that turned around. Takes ten days to get a permit done. I don't think that that's necessarily a a long term to do. But I think with a couple of hiring that we that we have made, moving in the right direction, so we can make those, we could probably bring those times down a little bit quicker. Need to get out of the way and let business come in here. They will come in here if we streamline everything within our city government to make that happen. Second thing is, is we don't actually have to only build downtown. We can build, like Nick said, out out away from, I think it's Forty-Fourth. There are some great opportunities that we do that, but to do that, we're going to have to have the infrastructure to get it out there because currently we we don't have the infrastructure to make that happen. So we're going to have to have infrastructure investment also and get out of the way of get out of the way of making the process less efficient.
Dave?
I guess in in this context, I would ask what the definition of healthy is. Lot of cities pride themselves in a sixty-forty split. I don't believe Polk City is a city that needs a sixty-forty split. We have a ninety-ten now. I I think we need more commercial, but I I don't believe that we are a city that will support or can based on our demographic, based on our geography and just the the consistency of our city. We are, we are a younger city that we are able to go to get the amenities in town. So we do need commercial growth, but we're not going to be a sixty-forty or a fifty-fifty because that's not who we are. That are, that's that's my thoughts and that's what I've learned over the last sixteen years. What I will say is, we've been able to stand up very smart growth in the residential aspect and we've only raised taxes less than four dollars over the last fifteen years. So we are still in an incredibly healthy area. We've bonded only for a quarter of what we can. And we had no no debt for many, many, many years with the supplementation of lost. And we've lost, you know, three-quarters of that. We don't, we certainly don't take in nearly as much as we used to with that. But I I think we need to remember what our identity is, what we are wanting to be as a community. If we think we want to be a fifty-fifty split, then we need to be prepared to have big buildings in the middle of town, on the edges of town. I would rather keep small, necessary. Brian, don't do that to me. Small necessary, necessary services here, restaurants. You know, the different things that we can do here in town, we don't need to bring everything to us. It is readily available, but we need to be smart about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just one more economic development related question and then we'll move on to a different topic. Economic development is not just brick and mortar businesses. It's also workforce, childcare, place-making initiatives, making people want to come here and affordable housing. Do you have some thoughts on how to build more affordable housing in our community? And how do you envision making Polk City more welcoming and inclusive to all? And we'll just begin in the middle with Nick and go that way and then we'll come back to Dave and finish up with Jesse.
So a lot of our building has been done with what's known as, a lot of our residential building has been, development has been done with what's known as tax increment financing. And as such, it's my understanding that we're sitting on quite a good pot of money that is supposed to go from that tax increment financing towards low and moderate income housing. I would like to see us actually use that to incentivize some developers to put in some high-density housing, some medium-density housing, townhomes, row houses, things like that, things with character, places that people still want to live here in town. And that's, that's my big idea for bringing in places for new workforce to live. The people that come here right now, generally it's it seems like they're they're second or third homes. If you get lucky, you might be able to find an older house in town, but not a lot of people are buying their first houses here in town. So we have to have something that we can bring in, new and younger families to live in.
Rob?
Yeah, so I I probably have as strong a record as anybody over the last eight years voting against density. I am in favor of starter homes, though the definition of that has changed considerably here over the last couple of years. But I don't see density as a push that we need to make. We're suburban community. One of the things that I've heard and probably spent the most time talking to people about is the fear of losing property value with their homes by a neighbor or development coming in and changing that. I know for some of the people that have lived here a long time and used to be able to to walk through fields and and trees and a lot of things that were surround them, they they miss that. And and I do want to provide a community that those folks can be proud of as it changes. It's going to grow. I'm not anti-growth in any way, shape or form. With the earlier discussion around growing commercial commercially, I think that's something that we need to invest in. We've not put in any apartment buildings since I've come on and and I think that's a good move. The the density mix can get tough when you're talking about some of those commercial properties transitioning to residential. But I do sta- I I, like I said, voted against a number of things, most of which didn't get built, some of which did, that I felt were too dense. And it's a direct result of the conversations that I've had with folks that don't want to experience all types of housing around them. And and I I think that's the right move. I know it can get sticky and again, in those transition areas, but I believe this is a community that of the piece that's residential should be mostly single-family residential and you can have a mix therein. But I I do think that's something that we've handled pretty well over the last handful of years.
Well, one of the, during my outreach this year, talking to members in the community, one of the most kind of depressing things that I was told was I had a young, single mother with a disabled child that told me that she had originally moved to Polk City because she wanted her child to be in a small, smaller school community for a special needs child. And she had to move because she couldn't afford to live out here anymore. I believe that we have a great community and we should not set up artificial walls that you need to be middle-class or higher to be able to live out here. I believe that we should have multifamily homes. I think apartments are good if it's if it's moderated in the amount that we have and thoughtfully, you know, thought through. Again, when we talk about having services in town too, where are we going to get people that are going to work at our restaurants and our pubs and, you know, bars and stuff like that? Are we going to have people driving in from Grimes or Ankeny to work at these facilities for minimum wage or above minimum wage? We need realistic, affordable housing in our community and I've been told that is a problem. You know, we had some recent new homes open up that they started at some townhomes off of Broadway that started, you know, in the high three hundreds. That's not a realistic, affordable home for young families that want to be a part of our community. To me, community is important, like I said, and we should not have an artificial gate that you can only make so much money to be a part of our community. Again, to be able to grow and move forward, I I support multifamily buildings.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I really like what we're doing now. I I would absolutely be open to alternatives if the opportunity was there that we needed to put in apartments, we needed to do some some different thing. Right now, we don't have to. The fact that we have what we have today, as we look out and have that landscape that we've put together over the past many, many years, hundreds of years, hundred years since Ron was on council. We need, we 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 do need to remember that we are able to do it. So we should not conform to other communities that are able to do it. We have the capability of keeping things the way they are now and not necessarily diluting that. Average house is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's no way, way high. We get it. We're actually one of the the per capita highest paid per capita United States of company of cities that are five thousand to fifteen thousand. Meaning, we make more money. We, as a community, make more money, not saying that there should be gates or walls, but it is what our identity has attracted to us. That, those are the folks that are coming out here and I believe that we need to just remember where we have been, where we're going and not lose track of that anytime soon.
My father was a policeman in Oklahoma City for twenty years. And he would always, when I get an opportunity to ride with him, he would show me the high crime areas that I had to be, I had to stay in the car and they would go and knock on the door and give somebody bad news, apprehend whoever they're apprehending. It was always an apartment complex. It was never these nice homes that they're about the four hundred thousand area. So one, apartment complexes bring in crime. One, because they don't have to worry about their property like homeowners do. I am, however, in the, would like to see some retail businesses on the bottom and condos on the top. That way, people have an ownership and maybe their smaller footprint, their condos. But to do that, you'd have to have the infrastructure to go out east and that way we could possibly do that. In through this downtown area, we're too confined. I wouldn't, wouldn't see that being a feasible proposition. Townhomes I love and those owners, owning those townhomes is nice. Ownership brings a responsibility that brought us to Polk City and brings the type of people that are sitting in this audience and hopefully watching this on TV. And also, if you have a condo, you can get someone that just comes out of high school with their, maybe get their first mortgage and then they can step on up into a townhome and then step on up to a house. That gives those opportunities for those people to earn their way in those first few years when they move away from the the nest that we've all had to move from. I I think if they want to get an apartment, they can go to Grimes or Ankeny. There's plenty of them over there and they're not too far from here and they can drive.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to a different topic. And that topic is, are you in favor of a regional sports complex? Is that a need or a want? If you are in favor or if you are not in favor, what strategy would you adopt for this project? And let's see. We started with Nick before, right? So let's go ahead and start with Jesse and then work our way back around the other way. You'll be second and then we'll go to Jeff, okay?
With the population that we have here, being that the average age of the people here are thirty-five years old, the the need for our children and our young adults to be active in the place that we are is going to need a larger complex than we have down close to the bridge. I'm okay with that. I am not okay with making it the end-all, be-all amusement park that the city has to maintain employees and constantly do the upkeep in it. I'd kind of like to see a, an opportunity for a private company to come in and help share some of that burden and that cost. That way, we don't have to worry about hiring someone for the concession stands. Maybe they can help build those parks. Maybe we can have sponsorships out on the field walls that help us mitigate some of that cost against the the homeowners of the company or of the city. It doesn't always have to be a city burden to have the amenities that that come here. They have a place called Adventureland that people love to go play in the pool and everything. We don't always have to have a ci- a city solution for it because it it puts a lot of that economic strain on the homeowners and then the commercial. However, we do need to have some parks and we need to do have have at least the bare minimum and to, let's say, get a lot more of these summertime recreational activities going. And wouldn't cost much to put up ball fields and soccer fields and to make it a little bit better out there. And I think if we got started on the smaller pieces, the with the bigger pieces could come later on.
Dave?
We've come a long way in the parks and recreation, believe me. I was a part of two bonds that failed. Don't, don't judge me for that. I was part of two bonds that failed miserably in two thousand, I think it was twelve and sixteen. Anyway, we have been able to purchase ground. We have a seven, a seven-step process for putting the segments to putting in the High Trestle Trail. We're on number two. One is still in process as well, but it's moving forward. So that plan is there. I highly support it. I don't know, once we get the trail there, we're not going to have six, seven million dollars sitting around. So yes, we need a feasibility study, which we just approved at the council meeting on Monday. That feasibility study will get that process started. And what what can the community handle as far as a debt load or what is there for sponsorships? What are those opportunities Jesse was mentioning before? So we have come a long way in getting our regional park complex together from a a bond that got thirty-two percent and thirty-three percent respectively. I believe there is, this is, this is meant to be this way. We have Jason on board who's the Parks Director, the Parks Rec Director. He's done a wonderful job. So we are going in the right direction. I think we have to continue down the path we're going right now in the planning. Sure, the regional park has been put back a couple of times, but that was only for essential services. That would be infrastructure and those types of things that we, we can't take on everything at the same time and we have to prioritize those things. So to your question, Steve, it would be a quality of life. Necessary quality of life at some level, but I've been thinking that for, you know, twenty years. I think we're doing it very smart, the way we're doing it today.
Okay. So obviously with me being on the Parks Commission and being on the Board of the Friends of the Parks, I am a proponent of all things parks. One of my common things that people probably get tired of me saying is, we are a community, right? So again, there's members in our community that think we definitely need more parks. And then there's a lot of people I've talked to that think we have too many parks. So it again, it's trying to find a balance. One of the things I think that's really important, as Dave just mentioned, that the city council did pass a thing this week where we're going to hire a consulting firm basically to figure out what we could spend, what we could come up with from either a commercial benefactor or what the city is willing to fund themselves. Again, I think it's important for us to know what what do we have available to spend before we start shopping on what we can actually build? Because again, like I said, I've spoken to a lot of people that are are against it, probably more that are against it than are for it. So again, it's trying to find a balance. I do believe we need something, a regional park. Because again, the park's not only for the facility, for the families that are here now. A lot of the things that the council decides on is strategic decisions. It's for the families that are going to be here five, ten years from now. We have to keep that in mind. A lot of these things might not be tangible that we realize right now, but we have to make the good decisions for the better of the community in the future. So again, I am a proponent of it, but again, being a little bit more methodical and being being data-driven on the decisions that we make.
Okay, so this is probably one of the stickier issues that we have to deal with right now. And but I I do want to acknowledge where we've been. So we purchased eighty acres out by the new Upper Elementary with reserve funds. And and I don't know that that has happened in any other community that I've talked to. The group that I have of metro peers that I talked about earlier, this is probably the second topic that we spend the most time on. And again, I'm very proud of the fact that we were able to purchase that land for the future, whenever we can get there with reserve funds. Where we are now is we have an unquestioned need. Again, I have three daughters that Again, I have three daughters that, two of them at least, would use it quite regularly. And figuring out the best path forward, like I said, is the stickiest issue. Waukees, West Des Moines, Ankeny and Grimes have all built complexes within the last handful of years. And every one of those has taken a different path. So, trying to figure out what's best for us while acknowledging the fact that we've had two failed bond issues. I came in right at the beginning of the, the end of the second one is something that we need to figure out. I think a really good first step that Jason was involved in was designing something, not necessarily figuring out how to pay for it, but designing something that didn't have a singular use. Inevitably, that has to be part of the solution. So, whatever demographic you're in, whatever your needs are, there's a purpose for you at this regional park. And with eighty acres, quite honestly, we should be able to do that. So, trying to figure out the mechanism to, to do that in a phased approach is probably needed. And like we said just last night, approved a expenditure to do an assessment, which I think is important. We've not done that in, in the past. We've used volunteers and that is something that we do need to do a little bit differently. So, I know that's not a straightforward answer because I don't know that there is a straightforward answer to this question.
Thank you.
Our current sports complex is crowded, chaotic, overbooked. And honestly, I think we're one miscue soccer ball from having a tragedy happen down there. The reality is, is that we've grown so much in the last two decades. And a lot of that growth has been young families and young kids. And we just don't have the space for the, all the user groups out there. We need something. I am incredibly glad that we signed, no, that maybe not signed yet, but approved a contract to have that feasibility study done to look at how we get from point A to point B on the regional sports complex, regional sports facility, because it is more than just a sports complex that we're building. Dog parks, trails, natural space, fishing ponds. We do need to get started on it somehow, though. And I would like to see us at least get the grading done as quickly as possible. That way, we can start getting some fields laid out. Those fields are gonna take time to grow. Grass takes time to grow. We've got some years to figure out what our next steps are after that. But the best way to get started is by getting started. The water tower that we're gonna put up is gonna go out there. And I think that is a great jumping off plane. So, that is what I have. I wanna see this thing built and I wanna see it started soon.
Okay. So, we'll just move on then. We've heard it said, there's not enough communication between the city and its citizens. Besides our newsletter, our Facebook, our email messages, what else do you think could be done to improve communication? Or do you think we need to improve communication? I think, Rob, you have not started, right? So, we'll start with you.
Yeah. So, I, I think communication from government is a constant issue. Nobody should trust our government. That's not an easy or hard statement to sell, given the environment that we're in. But the lowest level that we're at should be more conducive to that than any. As Nick mentioned, with the Neighborhood Citizens Group, I'm gonna make more I statements here than I typically would, but this is campaign, so I gotta give you a reason to vote for me, right? But I did start that. And, and it was not something that staff, and again, staff has turned over, so this is no critique of anybody that's here, but trying to instill a way to informally talk about what's going on. Ordinances are written in legalese that I don't always follow. And having been going and involved in these meetings for a long time, I don't expect it to naturally convey the purpose of what we're doing. So, it's a constant struggle. I, I think that we need to do a better job. I love talking about city stuff at Fairway, at the Creamery, wherever. That only gets you so far. And it's only my perspective. So, I appreciate in particular what Nick has tried to done to recap our meetings and we've talked about that in the past. When you're sitting in the seat, it's a little bit more difficult to do something like that because, again, it's your singular version of what happened at the meeting, your take on, on certain things. But I, I'm open to and have tried to communicate as much as I can and try to instill some programs that support that as well. I, I, I think I've responded to every call that I've gotten. I can remember one email that I didn't respond to because there wasn't actually a question in there. And, and it was something that we couldn't approve. But communication, transparency and honesty are tenants that I have as a councilperson and would like to continue. And the ways in which you do that do need to morph a little bit.
So, again, talking to the people in the community and the business owners, transparency, communication has been a common theme. There is no magic cure or magic bullet for it. You could do social media, but there's a lot of people that either choose not to participate in social media or just don't frankly understand social media, right? There's, I know back in the day, the, the town used to have a print magazine and we used to send stuff out or a little newspaper. But again, it, you know, it takes some accountability from a citizen, too, to be able to read that. Again, I don't know if there's a magic cure on, a magic way to solve this. However, one of the things that if I were to get elected, I would propose and look into is, I would be interested in seeing if we could host quarterly town halls, an opportunity outside the city council meetings. Again, people need to realize, the city council meetings are a time for the city to conduct, conduct business. You do have an opportunity to come in and speak and talk about things, but it's limited, very structured. Whereas I felt like if we did maybe a quarterly town hall with rotating council members to be able to come in and with some parameters, be able to question people, maybe the, the council member you felt more comfortable with could be able to come in and talk about. Again, we have to try. We have to pick something. We gotta figure out how to be transparent and, and come up with something. And again, talking with everybody I've spoken with, my idea would be try to host, you know, a forum like this to allow people to come in and, and ask us questions and talk and ask us to speak, you know, not legalese, but speak person to person.
Perception's reality. And what we see on TV every day is, we just saw another thing today on behind, under-the-table deals, things that are happening in the highest part of government. So, when you see that, you think, I wonder what our government's doing. There's nothing malicious happening. I can promise you that. We all are very, more ethically bound to that. However, communication is always going to be a problem. The question, the, the question is, what can we do? What do you feel we can do to make that better? If it's a town hall, perfect. Our cell phones, our emails, everything is on the website. It's a two-way street, but I also do agree that whatever way we can continue to promote communication, that's going to provide the community with a much better feeling of how things are being run. And we are still a small-town government. We're not the big behemoths we, we see on, you know, we're not the state. We have something here, but we do need to communicate based on what people's needs are. That, and that transforms from that age demographic as well. So, we need to keep up with the times of everybody on social media and, and also be thick-skinned as we do that because we know that if we ask for it, we're gonna get it. So, I have no problem with it, but I, I do, I'm open to any additional forms of communication that people are up for. If, hey, the, the old-fashioned just calling me, that works, too.
The town crier is how things used to be done in the seventeen hundreds. They were all small towns in the seventeen hundreds. We don't have a town crier nowadays unless you consider my one-and-a-half-year-old son the town crier, 'cause he's kinda there. But he, he lets us know when things are going wrong in the house almost immediately. So, what is a way that a, a city government can do that? Well, another way that a city government can do that is to put a lit-up board on the side of the city government building, letting them know in quick bullet statements what's coming up at the next meeting. And then also, you could say what is going to go on at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Somebody could put up an advertisement in between that, that would help mitigate the signs in long-term or help support whatever would go in the future. It's, there's, there's a lot of things you could do with that board being on the side of the building. That would be one thing. The second thing is, you're gonna, people are just going to use the internets and, and we're gonna have to be able to do that. That's a necessary evil and it's just gonna get bigger and bigger. The other thing is, is the council member can actually go to the businesses and shake the people's hands and actually have conversations with people. We have an opposite Monday that we are not using to do council meetings. Those opposite Mondays would be a wonderful time for us to be able to hear disputes. Also, the council meetings should, we should have a little bit more of an open forum. That way, in case new information is given that they weren't able to give their card at the beginning of the, we have, you have to give a card at the beginning of the meeting to be able to speak. If new information is given during that meeting, those people can't speak on that new information. So, the council meetings need to be a little bit more freer and relax those rules.
So, Rob alluded to this, but I've actually been writing up my, it is an objective take of what happens at the city council meetings. And I've been putting them out there everywhere I can, to every group on Facebook that I can. And I'm never gonna reach everybody doing that, but I'm trying to do something. The city does put out their agendas and the full packet of all the information that the city councillors get when they make their decisions. I've been wading through that, trying to figure out what it all means, and then try to make a summary of that based on what I see when I go to a city council meeting. I don't think it needs to be objective. It doesn't need to be perfectly objective. That's what the meeting minutes are for. If you've got a question, the city does broadcast all of this on YouTube. You have the opportunity, as a citizen, to read through that material yourself and watch it and get your take on it if mine seems screwy, and it might. But yes, I, I do, I'm a big person on transparency. The city government does put everything out. It's there. But not everybody's gonna take the time to read through three hundred pages of city council packet. And the agenda's not gonna mean much if they don't read through that entire packet. And just watching the YouTube isn't gonna mean much if you haven't gone through the packet. So, we need to do something to have a better summary of what happened. If I'm elected, I'm, I'm gonna keep doing it unless the city lawyer tells me that I have to stop. And any other council member is free to do the same. But somebody needs to say something and give that info. I wanna be that person.
Great. Thank you. So, we're an hour into this already. And I, I don't know about you, but I'm really enjoying this. So, we're gonna go on. So, we're gonna move on to our next question because we have a lot of different areas that we have questions in. And so, we wanna get to those. For example, the city budget is one of the most important tasks the city council is asked to review and approve annually. Can you talk a little bit about how you think we ensure a balanced budget while ensuring our city departments can operate efficiently and effectively? And I think we're back down to starting with you.
Yes, I believe so. So, we have, we've really changed our budgeting process and it's gone incredibly well. We're actually starting for next year already. We, we have a wonderful team in place that has, has done a great job at being able to revise and revisit how we've done that. Coming to decisions are, they're not as difficult as you would think because the essential services have to be taken care of first. Infrastructure, EMS, police and fire, right? Is, we check the boxes there. We go down to necessary services. Those are things that business, making sure that we're emboldening the business community. I, I agree with what has been said about being a cohesive unit for that. So, what monies need to go back into the current businesses to promote Polk City as we move forward? And then, the hardest part of all this is what everybody's passionate about. Everybody has their passion. Their passion might be parks. Their passion might be business. Their passion might be having an Italian restaurant. So, that is one of the hardest parts. As I, Charlotte was going like this, but essential services, we have to make sure we're safe. And believe me, when you, if you have a chimney fire or if you have something going on at your house, you'll be very glad that we have the quality of services that we have today. And that is just a testament to the wonderful people that provide those services. So, I think the, and then if we go to quality of life, we have to look at regional parks, trails, those things are moving forward as well. So, it is really a trickle-down effect. And I believe that that is really the way that we have to, to look at our budgeting
Essential services, they're, they're mandatory. They're essential. You can't go on without it. I mean, that has to be done. Our, our wants and needs have to be put at the last. Our wants and needs and the way that we grow is gonna be impacted through our infrastructure that we have. If we don't, if we're not able as a council to sell a bond issue, to explain how the issue of the infrastructure is gonna go for our future of our growth, then we're not doing part of our job. We need to make sure that that infrastructure is understood, whether it be a natural disaster that could come that we need to prepare for, or as for if it's expansion of parks, recreation area and living out into the eastern part of the city. You have to be able to communicate the necessity to get that infrastructure done. So, then the, the populace will be able to either fund it. But if we're not able to, if we're not able to communicate that, which goes to the last question, that we're not able to put those infrastructures into the budget and then everybody be happy. We all want, we all want the niceties, but to get the niceties, you gotta go through a painful scenario. And, and that is going, gonna hit us in the face if we don't take those steps here shortly.
Steve, can you give me the wording of that question one more time? I wanna make sure I stay on.
So, the city budget's one of the most important tasks the city council is asked to review and approve annually. Can you talk a little bit about how you think we ensure a balanced budget while ensuring our city departments can operate efficiently and effectively?
So, like Dave said, the, the city budgeting process basically happens year-round. By the time you're approving the first, you're, by the time you're approving the one, the year you're going into, October rolls around and you're starting to get your preliminary numbers to begin building your budget for the next year. My understanding is that our current city manager has been doing an excellent job of keeping on top of that and making sure that all of our services are funded and kept within what we can actually bring in dollar-wise from taxes. I don't think I have anything additional to say.
Okay. You don't have to.
So, yeah, the, the budget is approved in, in the spring every year. State's adjusted that a little bit, but a lot of time, January, February and March, finalizing the budget is spent. And as a councilperson, it's, it's a lot of work, but it, it is, to the question's point, the most critical thing that we do. How I look at it is outside-in, from the foundational pieces to the, to the more discretionary ones. And by foundational, I mean roads, I mean infrastructure, I mean police and fire. And, and I do think that our infrastructure is very solid. I think our roads are pretty good. Come springtime, that will be less true, but it is something that, in large part, especially if you look around the metro, is pretty strong. We have invested a lot in police and fire over the last five years because we've needed to. Those departments have evolved. And, and I think we've, we've given the department heads the discretion that they need to be able to equip staff and run their departments as they, not as they see fit, but to the extent that they want, we've provided. Um, we, we've provided. From there, uh, actually, back up a little bit. So another thing that we've implemented in the last couple of years is, um, is a vehicle replacement plan. Uh, when I joined the fire department, I was, uh, very nervous to drive a half a million dollar fire truck. Because later I messed up the bumper and, uh, thankfully it wasn't a major part, but, um, now that same truck is close to a million dollars. And so, uh, that is significant, but there's a replacement plan that I don't believe is audacious, uh, and, um, and, and one that we have, uh, put those areas in, in good position for. Um, the, the discussion comes in, in the margins. And so, uh, we spent a lot of time at the end going through those pieces, but I think the process is strong a lot of time. Um, but it, it's something that we focus on, um, and something that I do feel pretty, uh, proud of the process that we have in place.
So I, again, it, it's a common theme up here, right? Um, first of all, I, I feel that our health and our budgeting process is very good in our community. We should all be happy to, uh, know that. Again, essential services are non-negotiable that we're gonna make any cuts there. Um, and again, um, I think where the challenge is, is when we go into the budgeting, um, cycle is sometimes you need to make some hard decisions between the wants and the needs and the strategic investments. When we talk about strategic investments, we might have to look about taking away from a want and a need to, um, invest in something that we might not have tangibly, um, in front of us right away, but we realize in, you know, three to five years. Again, I look at the budgeting process as something that needs to be very data-driven. We need to have as much data and listen to our subject matter experts on the entire budgeting process. And again, as a council member, we have a wonderful, um, staff and department heads that are, again, subject matter experts. We take into consideration all the data that they provide us. And from there, you know, we make the decisions on, uh, agreeing with them or, uh, challenging them or questioning them on if we need to reshuffle some of the wants and the needs to maybe some more strategic or reprioritizing some of the wants and needs. Again, I feel pretty good in the system that we have. Again, not being intimately involved in it, I'm not here liberty to say that there's opportunity for improvement. But again, like everything in life, um, I think there's an opportunity for improvement and be able to make some, uh, educated, data-driven decisions.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, we have a few questions left and, um, these are questions that, some of them go to personalities, your own likes, whatever. So, uh, in the, in the interest of time, uh, you have two minutes to answer the question. If you don't take two minutes, that's okay too. So, uh, and we'll get them in. So we did invite the public to submit some questions and, uh, a couple of people submitted a question about UTVs, ATVs, and golf carts. But I'd like to sort of wrap that into a much larger question, and that is, if you could change something in our community, what would it be? You know, I already mentioned UTVs. We've talked about trails. We talked about sidewalks, the need, the need for pedestrian safety, uh, parks, so forth and so on. Let's just wrap all that into one question. And if there's something that you would change, what would it be? And I think we'll start with Nick.
Okay. Uh, the one thing that I would change in Polk City, uh, well, I mean, if, if we're wishing magically here, I'd, I'd like to see all of our facilities, uh, modernized and updated. But, uh, on a realistic basis, I would like to see us push forward on that regional park. That is, in fact, my passion project here. That's my answer.
Okay.
I'd like to see us start the regional park.
Okay. Um, and we'll go to Rob.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna take the full two minutes off this, 'cause I tried to be reflective and, and, uh, being a little bit slow, I've made mistakes. So to get very specific, the sign ordinance that we changed a few years ago is one of my big regrets. So we've made it unnecessarily onerous on churches and not-for-profits in an effort to clean things up. And, and I'm gonna go into this probably more than is necessary, but it is a microcosm of how I try to look at some of these things. So in, in a well-intentioned change to try and clean up the, the, all the signs, uh, that, that used to be on the roads, we had a sideways impact and, and to be, and I, and I voted for it. I, I was excited about it, to be honest. Did not fully realize the impact that it was gonna have. Um, for example, church has to choose between which one of their special services, um, that they put signs out for. And, uh, the Legion, um, can't as freely put out fish fry and some of those signs. And, and I think that it is a minor thing because it's a sign and there's other ways to get that out. But i- it's damaging when you do something like that, that you're as wrong about that as I was. So, um, that's one thing I, I brought up a few different times. It's tricky to fix. Uh, just had a conversation with the Historical Society. They had to get a permit and, and paid seventy-five dollars to put their museum sign on. And I just think that, that, that's hard for me to swallow. Um, and it's even more difficult to unwind. So, um, to, to get more to the spirit of the question, I have learned that, that there are those people out there that feel a little bit disenfranchised, that don't feel connected to the city. So, um, bringing this up and I'm getting the time warning, which couldn't be worse. But I, I really wanna do a better job of changing how people feel about what we're doing as a community. And I know being on here for eight years, I'm part of the problem. And so, um, whether it's communication, again, I don't know exactly how, but I do wanna fix that. It's always gonna be an issue. There's always gonna be people that would rather snipe online than, than get involved. But the people who are genuinely interested, I wanna be a, a better advocate for and connect with them.
So I don't know if I have anything I would change. Change is kind of a strong and scary word to a lot of people. I, I will say improve. So participating in the downtown assessment earlier this year, we sent a survey to, uh, a lot of the residents, and I believe we only had like two-hundred-and-twenty-nine respond. But in that, that we got a lot of good data, and I think we all agree that our downtown square is our heart and our soul of our community. Like everything else, there's opportunity for improvement there, right? Not change, improvement. We've been told that, you know, it could benefit from a little bit more color, some more plantings, some more murals. I mean, there's been a huge reception to, um, our pocket park, um, with the color down there. But even something as simple as adding some planters, um, some, you know, different colored plants throughout the season, adding some benches, make it a little bit more walkable downtown. Again, make our downtown square a little bit more, uh, welcoming, especially to, uh, visitors that come through to have them do a double take and wanna come back and, uh, ha- you know, have patronage to our community and our, and our local business people. We did get a gleam, a lot of good information from that downtown assessment. And again, um, I still think change is a scary word, so I'm always just gonna use improve. And, um, I think, you know, try and improve and make an investment downtown to make it a little bit more vibrant and, and lively and not so, um, I, I will use somebody else's term, so drab. We have a beautiful downtown. I regularly, um, go down there and enjoy it myself, and I think we would all benefit from lightening up.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I think it's my turn.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I, there's a couple of things I'd like to do. One is, I'd like to bury the cable and telephone poles that are up right now. Right now, they're subject to storms. Uh, that would be able to knock everybody out for those. Uh, once we get those cleaned up, that would be a, a, a good situation. Um, if you go down Third Street and you're headed out towards Wolf Creek, telephone poles, maybe twenty inches off the actual road, and you can, you're a, you are a one glance at your radio from being headed into that thing. So, uh, if we can get those things, one, it would, it would make a safer place. Second one is have the bandstand an actual usable bandstand. Right now, you got a strummer up there during a farmer's market. That's about all it's good for. Um, you can make a bigger gazebo-looking place, and, and that way the, uh, city council doesn't have to go buy a stage every time that they're having a stage done for a band coming up for the fall festival. You could actually have a wonderful gazebo to put the bands on, and, uh, and then the audience will be able to participate. And that's probably the two, two that I would change.
So mind, if I could turn back the clock twelve years, it would be to the first bond vote that we were able to connect the technology park with a park that we had, uh, talked about for the forty acres that we would have purchased there, and we would have had our facilities built out. And that would have been that long ago, and we would be talking about some different things right now. Uh, not that it's still not important. It's not, still things that we need to, um, we need to, to look at and prioritize. But I, that, that was a tough, well, the two subsequent tough votes that we had. That would, that would really change the outlook, I believe, on what we're talking about today. And isn't it something how that, the parks and all those are so important? And it's, it's a novel thing to have it in the community that we're talking about that, and that's our number one priority. It's taxes, of course, but it's one of our main priorities. So we're very fortunate that that's what we're talking about and it's not lack of infrastructure. Um, there's so many different things that, um, I would, it took me, I, I, I just, quick tabulation, five hundred different council meetings that I've had. I'm not saying that's great, but what I'm saying is, through that wealth of knowledge, uh, there is a lot of things I would change. But I have learned, certainly, and I want to take that moving forward and not lose that momentum moving forward as well.
Okay. Thank you. What kind of a city councillor would you be? A leader? A follower? Where could you lead the way on the council? I think we'll start with Jesse, and we'll come this way and go back around.
I've never been a follower a day in my life. I wouldn't know what that is, um, except for when my wife tells me, "Come here." And then I'm usually following pretty, pretty rapidly. Um, I, I, um, I'm, I'm a listener, uh, and some of the smartest men and women that I have ever been around in corporate or in, um, uh, leadership environments have been wonderful listeners. And if, if you can actually listen to what the, uh, what the scenario is, you can make better decisions. And, and, um, I try to hone those skills, and it's a constant, constant battle, 'cause I'm very extroverted. Um, but I would love to, uh, work with either one of these wonderful people up here and, uh, the board that we have and, um, be able to make the improvements that I think, uh, better fit the city in, uh, going in the direction that, uh, we should go in. I'm, I'm very much a person who likes to get, uh, coalitions together. And, um, there's not just one way, and there's not just, you're the only way. We need to be humble, and we need to be, have that servant attitude. And we need to, most of all, be wise with the, uh, with the authority and, uh, with the money that people have graciously give us at the city level and be a wonderful steward. And that takes leadership. By listening.
Repeat that for me.
Uh, yeah. Um, what kind of a city councillor would you be? A leader? A follower? Where could you lead the way on the council?
Thank you. I think you have to be a little bit of each. I'm a naturally, that's just how, I, I like to lead, but in this position, you sometimes, and need to follow and learn by those that know way more than you do about a specific area. Mike Schulte takes care of the, the Public Works. Jeremy takes care of police. I, I'm following. I'm following on that. Accountability, sure. Yeah, accountability. Oversight, we need to have that. We need to make sure that what we're spending money on, we're getting the services specific to that. So I, I, I'm gonna continue to be me, and that means doing some following, doing some leading, bringing some people together at times to try to get through something specific that, that may be an issue within the city. Those are the types of qualities that I bring and that I will continue to bring, and that's open, honest. A partnership, really. It's, I'm just here to take the brunt and to help, uh, help the, the community move things forward financially, infrastructure, whatever the case may be.
Well, like most of the gentlemen up here, I'm a leader too myself. I've spent thirty years doing IT work for Farm Bureau Insurance. I'm a very analytical person, like I've said before. I'm very data-driven. Um, I rely on SMEs, subject matter experts, on what they say. Um, and again, a good leader, um, tries to put their personal beliefs to the side and listens to the facts of both sides of the issue. I feel that's one of my strengths, and that's one of the, um, strengths that I would bring to the city council if elected. Um, again, I, I believe that working with everybody is important, but being a leader on the city council is the most important because you're being entrusted by the community as a whole to lead the community and make the decisions that's best for the entire community. So again, um, I would be a leader and would bring experience with making data-driven decisions.
So for me, um, what's important, uh, is to do the right thing, to be an advocate, and to be a good example. So, um, the first part, um, I, I have tried and, and strive to do the right thing, whether nobody's watching or everybody's watching. And, um, one of the best commendations that I think that I've gotten is, right now, we all have rotations if you're on the council, and right now, I'm, I'm Polk City's representative for the MWA, so Metro Waste Authority. They run the recycling, uh, staff, the landfill, all that. And this year, I'm ser- I've been asked to serve as the vice chair, and if elected again next year, I'll be the, the chair. And, um, that's usually not something that happens for smaller communities, and so I, I've taken that as a compliment. The, the current chair is, uh, the mayor of Altoona, and the previous one was the mayor of Ankeny. So, um, demonstrating in that capacity, which is a step removed from what we do, hopefully i- is an example of, of, of doing the right thing again, uh, even when less people are watching, 'cause besides Cliff, very few people show up to those meetings. The second thing is, is be an advocate. So like I said, I, I really do enjoy talking about what we're doing and, and trying to explain what's happening in the city and, and, uh, not always justify, but to a, a lesser extent, um, advocate for, for what we're doing and make people understand that, um, it's for the right purpose and, um, we're going the right direction and, and everything that we do, uh, we should be accountable for. And the last thing is to be example of my daughters. I, I got involved in the city, um, as I became a father and being an example in the fire department and, and trying to do right by a community that I love is something that I hope I can pass on to them.
Uh, I would be a thoughtful analyst. I'm also in a very data-driven field, which relies on subject matter experts. So I would wanna look at a problem, think about what our possible solutions are. Ask the people who run our departments what they think it, think solutions are. And then try to be a, a novel thought for thinking, what are different ways we can solve the problem that we have? I think every one of us up here are leaders. We probably wouldn't be here if we didn't, didn't think we could do this job. Uh, but I am more than comfortable either taking charge in a situation or providing the, the support that anybody would need to help drive from point A to point B on a project.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do wanna give you ti- an opportunity to sort of wrap up at the end, but I do have kind of a fun question here, or at least I hope so. If we had a million-dollar grant or donation become available to the city, what would you use it for? And how would you strategize the myriad options before us? Oh, and somebody needs to start, don't they? Uh, let's see, we went here, so here, let's start.
Million bucks. Um, I'd have to put money toward that darn trail. Just getting that thing connected, it's gonna make such a positive impact on this community. We have no idea. Pe- towns have been transformed. Madrid, Woodward. These are towns that their backbone is the trail. So it'd be really hard pressed not to do that. Obviously, if there's any commercial relief we would need, if, if needed, uh, facade improvements, if there's structural improvements we can make to make some cohesiveness downtown, I think, to what folks have mentioned earlier, that is something we need to hang our hat on. We need to make sure that we don't lose our, uh, take the eye off the prize there, because that is our unique, uniqueness is the downtown, and, and so that is a foregone that is our unique, uniqueness is the downtown. And so, that is a foregone conclusion, in my humble opinion. I believe that needs to be there all the time. But I'm gonna say the trail. Thank you, sir.
If I had a million dollars, I'd go ask for two. No. I, the first thing that I would do is build tunnels for the trail, road crossings. That way, that doesn't stop traffic, and they can still ride their bicycles, go on down the trail, and try to get as many tunnels as I could over every major interstate. Sometimes, when people put those stretchy pants on, they forget the gross vehicle weight isn't so good when you're facing a truck. So, I just, I would just like people to be able to drive under the road, and then there's no traffic issues with people walking or driving their bicycles across the intersections that we have throughout the territory and area that we could expand.
I'd start by asking our department heads what things are on their wish lists or have been deferred for a while and need to be taken care of, after seeing to their needs. I mean, I'm gonna sound like a one-note singer, but I would dump it back into Parks and Recreation, help make this town as fun and enjoyable a place to be as possible.
Million dollars doesn't get you as much as...
No, ain't much at all, is it? So, I'd ask for two.
Roundabout.
Put another zero on it.
And I know this should be more of a fun answer than, we've already talked about the regional park, but probably put it towards the regional park in a way that matching funds can be used. As I talked about with the other examples, Triumph Park in Waukees had, it was a twenty-million-dollar project. It'd be significantly more than that. But the city put up five, and they got donations for corporate involvement for the rest of it. We don't have Apple data centers here, so I don't think we're ever gonna get that. But if we can put that initial investment towards that, I do think there's a way to demonstrate progress. And to your, you know, somewhat jokey example, turn that million dollars into two towards the regional park.
So, I wanna agree, too. A million dollars is not a lot of money when it comes to improvements for a city. I would kinda like to go back to our downtown assessment that we did earlier this year. We were actually surveyed our residents, right? Again, we're a community. What would the community be interested in? You know, when we asked the community what they would do if they had a hundred thousand dollars, a lot of the respondents said they would make investments in the downtown square. Again, things like what I talked about. Investing in what we feel is the heart and soul of our community, again, by making improvements to the bandstand, making it more walkable, updating, maybe putting a set of stoplights. I know we've talked about that, putting stoplights at Third and Broadway. Maybe trying to incentivize some businesses down there. But again, our downtown square is the heart and soul, so I would probably focus the funds, myself, on the downtown square and some sort of benefit.
Okay, great. Okay, so if you had twenty million dollars...
Now we're talking.
Complex questions.
Yeah. Okay, so we do wanna give you some opportunity to wrap up here. We've asked a lot of questions, and maybe you can boil it down into something that you'd like to say after you've responded to all these questions already. I think, just like we gave you more time at the beginning, we'll give you more time at the end to do a wrap-up of anything that you would like to say about yourself or the community or any of this process. And then I think that will take us pretty close to the end of our time. So, why don't we go ahead and begin and give you the opportunity to wrap up? And, you know, we'll go with that four minutes like we did at the beginning. But again, you don't have to fill all that time. I, quite frankly, don't know where we are in terms of who started first, so we'll start with Jeff and come this way.
One more time on what the question is, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure. We'll give you just an opportunity to wrap up. Do you have anything you'd like to say, just to wrap things up?
Yeah, again, I will say, you know, I've only been a resident nine years. I've been a resident of central Iowa for fifty years. Again, I truly love this community. I decided when I moved here that this is gonna be my forever community. Even if I am not elected, I'm not gonna get discouraged. I'm still gonna participate and be involved in this community. The people mean a lot to me, and the friendships that I've earned mean a lot to me as well. I will tell you again, my platforms that I'm running on is commercial growth, equity, fiscal responsibility, and quality of life. Like I said, I firmly believe that we're a community of diverse people, and we should consider everybody's wants, needs, and desires in all the decisions that we make. And you've probably heard enough of me talking for the night, so I'll concede my time back.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So, in answering that non-question, 'cause he didn't actually ask.
I know.
I guess, this is a sort of a, I knew coming into this that with the big shoes that are being vacated by Ron not running, this go-around was gonna be a little bit different. And for my previous two times, well, having been appointed a handful of months later, it was really a non-question from my standpoint to run that time, as it was the second time. This time, I gave it a little bit more thought, because projecting out four years means that my oldest daughter's gonna be senior in high school. And when I woke up from passing out from realizing that, I realized that this next stretch warranted a little bit more thought than I had previously given the other two times. So, in consultation with my wife and kinda thinking about things, I think this is probably it for me. And if that means at the end of this next term, or if that means here in a couple of months, I will have benefited more than I ever gave back. And I think about when the, when I spent the time and I've met the people that I have, whether it's through the fire department or wherever, I'm proud of what was done. I wish more could've been done. Grateful for the opportunity. I love this place and look forward to living here for a long time and thankful for the opportunities that I've had.
This is my home. I love this town. Win or lose, I'm still gonna be here volunteering on the Parks Commission, with the user groups, with the Little League and the soccer club. I'm gonna keep striving to make this town better, whether I'm on the council or not. That said, I feel like I might've come off a little bit one-dimensional tonight, and I'm definitely not. I care about a lot of things that we didn't necessarily get around to talking about. So, if there's a topic that we didn't get to and you wanna hear my opinion on it, if I haven't knocked on your door yet, know that I'm coming, and I'm gonna give you the opportunity to holler at me about it.
Well, every time that I've went into a new facility as a manager, I noticed that the people who had been working there for a long time were just used to the way things were there, and that's how the operation took place. And they got so used to the way things were that they were reluctant to change. Then there was a lot of resistance to change after the implementations were done, and then everyone got used to the new changes. And then as a manager, you have to be able to assess, were those changes good or were those changes bad? And then you may have to make more changes. But the city's changing, like it or not. This city is changing, and it's always going to change. I would like to be a new set of eyes, to maybe be able to give some different ideas through my experiences of the different places that I've lived. I'm so grateful I have moved to Polk City. This has been such a wonderful place. And I would like to have the opportunity to meet with you all and pick some of your brains, 'cause the brainwashing and the new ideas is what this council needs and what's this city needs. And I'd love to have the opportunity to go ahead and be your voice on the council humbly. Thank you.
First, I wanna thank everybody here, coming here, friendly debate, everybody that's joining us, even Steve, everybody online. But sixteen years ago, I started as the youngest councilperson of people that were incredibly seasoned and things were kinda the good old, it was, it was kinda, you know, things were rolling. We were getting lost funds. We hadn't increased taxes for twelve or fifteen years. And we've only done just a little bit of that to this point. Now, I happen to find myself in the point where I'm the most seasoned. And I'm not saying that makes me the best, but what I will say is, if you like Polk City now, if you like the direction we're going, if you call this home, and you plan on calling it home for many years to come, that's what I'm here to maintain. Maintain the identity, not get in any trouble by being too crazy, keeping those folks that do know, have the expertise to tell us what direction the ship needs to go. I'm not gonna have any unique ideas that's gonna change the world, but certainly what I can do is be the conduit and the, be vulnerable, be approachable, open and honest when you ask me a question. It may not be, I'll state it in a very nice way that you probably won't feel offended till you get home, but it will certainly be answered. But I wanna, I wanna be open. I don't wanna lose what we've got up to this point. I, I'm not saying we would, but what I'm saying is, we got something really fun going here, and I wanna be a part of it moving forward. I can't be as bold as Rob to say this is my last run. I don't know. I'm just following, I'm following my heart and the folks that are out there trusting in me to do that. So, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Okay, great. So, I'm sort of reading the room, and you've been a great audience, and we wanna keep you as friends. So, I think we'll probably look at wrapping this up. I had promised you that the council candidates would hang out until eight o'clock if you wanted to ask them questions one-to-one, or just shake their hands, or whatever you want to do. So, I wanna thank all the council candidates for coming here tonight and giving open and honest answers. This is never easy to do, and we appreciate the work that you put into it. Wanna thank Go Polk City, who sponsored this event. It's important that we have events like these in our community. I wanna thank the North Polk School District for providing the camera, cameras, and helping us with getting this out on our YouTube channel. I do wanna mention that we're gonna be right back here tomorrow night from six to eight PM, and Go Polk City is sponsoring a school board candidates forum. There are three candidates running for two open positions, so there won't be nearly as many people. But I would invite you to please come to that, because just like our council positions are critically important to us, because Polk City has a tremendous number of students in the North Polk School District, that is equally as important to us as well. So, I invite you to come back and participate in that as well. So, that said, I'm just going to go ahead and wrap it up and invite you to talk to our council members. So, again, thank you for being here tonight.